Okay, I'd like to call to order the City Council Work Session Meeting for Monday, November the 6th, 2017. I note the presence of one of our great singers, Davey Moore. I just see you, Davey. Thanks for -- good to see you here. All right, so the first topic on our agenda is to discuss our approach to north side traffic calming and related parking regulations. Good evening, Kent.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. The topic of discussion tonight is, as you see, it's north side neighborhood traffic calming and related concerns, and we'll get into that in a minute. What I thought we'd do was quickly talk before we get into the meat of the presentation about how we sort of got to this point. And you'll see in the presentation during capital improvement program discussions for FY '18, the council showed support for utilizing upwards or around $50,000 of the traffic calming budget for some sort of traffic calming in the north side neighborhood. Staff recently met with Mayor Throgmorton and Councilman Thomas to discuss what that traffic calming project might look like, and then got into some other concerns as well. And then subsequently, staff put a memo in the November 2nd information pack outlining six general topics that were discussed at the meeting with the council. And then we've got some recommendations and some information on each one of those six topics. As far as the discussion topics are concerned, there are six, as I mentioned, that we'll touch on tonight. The first are concerns related to the safety of crosswalks at Jefferson Lynn and Market and Lynn intersections. The second is the Bike Master Plan, which was recently adopted by council this last fall or summer, and the recommendations for the neighborhood and the relation to larger transportation network. Concerns with sightlines at intersections due to on-street parking concerns. The fourth is the potential for construction of traffic circles at key intersections to improve safety and other benefits. The fifth is concerns with the availability of on-street parking and the potential for residential parking permit system. And then the last topic is concerns with the availability of on-street parking near College Green Park.
So Kent, do you want us to ask questions after you talk about each topic, or do you want us to save it all to the end?
That is completely up to council, however you guys want to handle it. There's, you know, some of the topics are a little more in-depth than others, and it might be hard to come back to it later, so perhaps you just want to ask questions.
Yeah, let's do them by topic.
All right, if we get off time, let me know, and we can speed it up and then wait till the end. The first topic of concern, as I mentioned, was the Jefferson Lynn and Market Lynn intersections. This is not a new issue. This is an issue that was discussed back in 2013 as part of a formal north side neighborhood transportation study that was completed in-house. Since that time, there's been several changes, one of which is staff removed several parking spaces on Jefferson Street to the west of the crosswalk that comes through by Seashore Hall from Iowa Avenue. And we did that to increase the visibility of pedestrians at that intersection. That was one of the concerns that the neighborhood had. Also, there are yield to pedestrian signs that I'm sure you're all aware of that have been installed on Market and Jefferson at Lynn Street. And subsequent to that, we did a follow-up study that staff completed that showed that the incidence of yielding to pedestrians increased from about 5% before the in-street signs were put in to about 32% afterwards. So what that means is if you walked up to the curb pre-signs being put in-street, about 5% of the traffic would actually yield to you and allow you to cross. Now, if you're standing on the curb or maybe even have a foot in the crosswalk, that jumped to about 32%. So, pretty incredible increase. As far as the actual facts and total reported collisions, you'll see that between 2011 and 2013, for that three-year period, there were 10 collisions at Market and Lynn, there were 10 collisions at Jefferson and Lynn, and there was one bicycle collision at the Jefferson Street intersection. Between 2014 and 2016, Market Street decreased a little bit, Jefferson increased a little bit to 14 collisions, and there were no bicycle or pedestrian-related incidents that were reported. To put things in perspective a little bit, while I think these numbers are all very important and not to diminish the concern of any collision, but when you put things in perspective just a little bit, you can look at our intersection rankings. So what staff does about every three or four years when we have time is we actually go through and rank all the Iowa City intersections, one being the worst, all the way up to 250 or so. And those are intersections that have three or more collisions, and we rank them based on number of collisions, severity collisions, and collision rates. And we have a little formula that we put together to do that. And again, to put things in perspective, Jefferson and Lynn then would rank 99th worst in Iowa City, and Market and Lynn 110th. So while, again, I'm not trying to diminish those collisions that did occur, and especially the bicycle collision that occurred, they're not something, you know, these aren't intersections that really pop up on our radar as far as something that we really need to look into. That said, again, not to diminish the severity of those collisions, but back in 2014, when we worked on the downtown traffic model project, we collected data at 30 or so intersections in and around the downtown area. And just at Jefferson Street, there were about 800 bicycles and pedestrians that were counted crossing in some fashion just at morning, noon, and PM peak periods. So just three hours out of the day, there was about 800 pedestrians. That was in October, so possibly even not the best weather. And again, when looking at that compared to six collisions, or excuse me, one bike-ped collision in the last six years, you start to get a sense of maybe how safe or unsafe that intersection might be. That said, we can never make things too safe, and if the council wishes to make improvements, we would recommend constructing bump outs or bulb outs, whatever you might want to call them, at Jefferson Street. And I've got an image here in a second to illustrate that. The bump outs increase visibility of pedestrians even further because you're out a little bit further into the street. And in this case, it would shorten the crossing distance from about 41 feet to about 32 feet. So roughly 10 feet shorter crossing distance for pedestrians. It's similar to what's present on the north side of Market Street currently, and again, I've got an image in a second, and the estimated cost would be about $60,000 to construct. And this, I don't know if we can dim the lights or not, but if you can see on the top image, that might help a little bit. On the top image, on the north side, that's the Market Lynn intersection, you can see how there's what we would call a bump out or bulb out there at the intersection, if I can use my cursor here. So that's what we refer to as a bump out. And they sort of define the parking area a little bit better. And then again, as I mentioned, that's going to decrease the crossing distance about 10 feet if that was constructed at Jefferson. And what you see in the image below is an actual mock-up of what that bump out would look like. Because Jefferson Lynn's a T-intersection, of course, we have to construct it a little bit differently. But that's approximately what it would look like and is designed to convey the storm water and those sorts of things. That's what I have on Jefferson Lynn, Market Lynn. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, otherwise we'll just keep.
Yeah, so y'all have questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. What's the lighting at Jefferson? Because I feel like Market is very different than Jefferson just from a business standpoint and what's out there and.
Overhead street lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, so both intersections have overhead street lighting. I don't know right now if they're high-pressure sodium or LED, but Mid-American tells us that all of the, and the reason I say that is because LEDs typically seem brighter to most people. They're a more blue light than the yellow light and seem brighter. By the end of this year, which I think is somewhat, it's going to be a hard goal to meet, but Mid-American tells us they're going to change out all the city lights to LEDs. So regardless of what's there today, it'll only get better. But when we review these corridors, we typically don't see them as being too dark. It meets the city policy to have overhead street lighting at one of those locations.
You also have pedestrian-scale lighting on the north side of Jefferson, that intersection. There's some of the Bell lighting there right on the intersection.
Right.
Is this too narrow for a traffic island? I know on First Avenue near the High V, I love that island. Is this too narrow for that?
So, yeah, so we would refer to that like as a refuge island, but they have to be six feet minimum bystander. That's the width that has to be minimum. In this case, let's see if it's 41. It may be too narrow because of the parking, but that's something we could look into.
How will the bump out affect cycling?
It shouldn't. Later on in the presentation, we talk a little bit about the Bike Master Plan, which has buffered bike lanes recommended, and we can get into the specifics on that. In this case, if you were to construct something that's in the bottom image, you would still be able to maintain the bike lanes that are there today. Yeah.
So I'd like to make three observations, Kent. And I cross through these intersections almost every day. One is Jefferson Street is clearly worse than Market Street. So if we're going to do something, it'll all be done there first.
Agreed.
The second is drivers don't know what bicyclists are. They don't know if they're pedestrians or vehicles. Likewise, bicyclists don't know what they are. So it's just, you know, a situation of, I don't know, something like ignorance on the part of drivers and bicyclists. The third thing is that the second pass, walkway in the sequence, you know, going in one direction, the second one is ignored by drivers.
Right, because the sign is west of the first crossing on Jefferson, correct? Yeah, I observed the same thing.
Yeah, so I don't know if we can do anything about the latter two points that I just made. But the bulb out, I think that's a good idea for Jefferson Street because the sight distance, the sight for a bicyclist or a walker is really bad, coming from the south especially.
Right, no, I agree, and those are all good observations. The one thing I noticed too about, to your comment about whether a bike is a pedestrian or a bike is a bicyclist, the one issue we have at this location too that is hard to combat is the fact that we've got bicyclists crossing in the crosswalks themselves, which is fine except for that if they don't slow down and actually walk their bike across like as a pedestrian, that makes it really difficult for a driver to judge the speed at which they get there and all sorts of things. So, and we have that same issue almost throughout downtown, but that is a hard thing when we actually have bicyclists on the sidewalks rather than in the street. And statistically, it's more dangerous to be on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so as bicycling becomes more prominent in our city, we're going to have to do a better job of informing people, helping them understand how they're supposed to act.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments about this idea?
Well, I support the idea of the bulb out. I think north side marketplace as a kind of an extension or, you know, commercial area annexed or near the downtown will benefit from any better connectivity that we can provide. So I think that is, that's, you know, I think at our north side neighborhood meeting some years ago, we talked about this, so I'm pleased to see, you know, the proposal. The other thing, and I know maybe in the large scheme of things, the collisions, you know, may not be as, this intersection is not as bad as others in Iowa City. But I feel we should look at everything we can to, and I don't know if you know what the speeds are going through there, but to try to do everything we can to improve pedestrian, bicycle, and driver safety. And so one thought I had, and was kind of in a way inspired, if you will, by the Dodge Governor couplet that we're talking about putting in buffered bike lanes. My sense, and I don't ride, I'm beginning to ride bicycles, but I haven't ridden Jefferson or Market, that it would be beneficial to buffer those lanes. And then the question would be, do we have the room to do that? And if so, you know, what would the buffer consist of in terms of its width? But, you know, measuring on GIS, it looked to me that the south lane is close to 15 feet wide. So it seems to me that even using an 11-foot standard for our lane widths, we can reallocate and narrow the lanes, which we know to be a traffic calming measure, and improve bicycle safety.
No, I agree. And to those points, there's a few things. I was talking to Darian Nagelgamm, our Senior Transportation Engineering Planner, earlier today, and we were discussing the bulb out and how that might look. And while we can't say that'll make things safer, because already, you know, we've had one bike collision the last six years, I certainly don't think it'll make things worse. And something that we decided was that it's really more of an amenity. You know, it's a comfort thing for pedestrians because right now, I think, as you mentioned, it's not comfortable. So whether or not it actually makes it statistically safer, you know, would remain to be seen, and it's a hard thing to judge. But it certainly won't make it worse, and I think it will make it a lot more comfortable. Because right now, I think if you're at the Market Lynn intersection, crossing still is a little challenging. You're crossing two lanes of traffic, but you feel more comfortable. You know, you're out there, you're on a curbed area, you're not sort of hanging out there trying to peek around the cars and see who's coming. So, and to the second point for you, John, there are buffered bike lanes suggested or recommended in the Bike Master Plan. It would fit, and we, I have a slide later that shows what that might look like.
Okay.
The minimum buffer that we can actually use is 18 inches, but I would suggest that more like a two- or three-foot buffer when we have room would be a lot better.
Because all we have is five feet and.
And a four-inch line.
Four-inch line, so a portion of that five feet is really kind of in the gutter.
Right.
You know, litter and drainage and all the rest of it, so the degree to which we can just widen that out.
Right.
And my understanding is NACTO is maybe in a draft form, but revising its recommendations for bike lanes. And I suspect that anytime they're going to recommend, anytime you have a bike lane along an arterial, you buffer it.
Is there support for this idea of doing a bulb out on that one part of the Jefferson Street intersection?
Yes.
Or opposition to it, anyone?
Yeah, I'd be supportive. So I was going to wait for this question, but since we're already talking about support. So this is going to come out of a CIP, and so we're looking at that as a recommendation in the budget process?
Right, right. The original, the original idea was that we've got a surplus in the traffic calming line item that's in the CIP. And whether or not that's ultimately where it would come from, of course, is up to the city manager and you all, but that was the original idea, and there are some surplus funds in there now, I think, to cover that.
Sorry. How much? We anticipate it, so when we presented the CIP to you last year, if you recall, the traffic calming line is just that. It just says traffic calming. It's not designated for any purpose. Every year, we set aside X number of dollars, and those just accumulate until there's a need. And I think, just harkening back, you know, we had a fund balance at the time last year of 70, 80, 90,000. We've probably drawn that down a little bit. $60,000 is a little higher than we estimated. We estimated 50,000, but it wouldn't, it fits within the budgeted scope. So we wouldn't necessarily bring it back to you unless we needed to from a project standpoint to get you to approve the design or accept a bid or anything like that. But this is small enough to, where you might not see this one again. Once you give us the go-ahead, we've got enough to get it done, and we'd aim to do it next year sometime.
Cool. I think you see support. Are you hear support?
Yeah, fantastic.
So what's next?
So that's, that topic of the bike lanes is a good segue into the second topic of discussion, which is the Bike Master Plan recommendations in relation to the larger neighborhood transportation system. The Bike Master Plan, as we just discussed, recommends buffered bike lanes on both Governor and Dodge and the Market-Jefferson pairs. The idea of a buffer, and I've got an image here in a minute, is to provide, of course, more space for the bicyclist and more space for the motorists, frankly, so everybody's more comfortable on the street and is a little bit safer. The nice thing too about buffered bike lanes is they might have an additional calming effect because you're actually squeezing the travel lane down a little bit. As I think you're all keenly aware, we've got an issue where we're not, citizens are not abiding by the speed limit on either Dodge or Governor. So I think that additional narrowing and squeezing things down a little bit would be beneficial. The Governor-Dodge buffered bike lanes are to be installed in 2018, so hopefully next summer, coincident with an overlay of Governor. So the DOT is planning an overlay and been working with City Engineering Department on that. And because Governor Street would get bike lanes at that point in time, the buffered bike lanes, in some talks with the city manager, we've decided that if we can, we'd also like to put them on Dodge at the same time. You know, they're a one-way pair just for bicycles, the same as they're a one-way pair for motorists. And there might be some efficiencies there too as well to get things painted all at the same time.
So Kent, there hasn't been any issue with this since these are highway?
No, you know, we've sat, we have quarterly meetings with the DOT, and we've been talking to them about this. They know our Bike Master Plan, whether they've looked through it that closely or not, has been adopted, and I don't sense that there'll be an issue with that. Ultimately, they're going to want to know what those travel lanes look like, the bike lane as well as the two travel lanes, but I don't sense that there'll be an issue with it. You know, if we start getting into a buffer that's three, four, or five feet wide, of course, there's going to be an issue. But I think if we stick to around three feet or less, two feet would be good. I think it would work well for the buffered bike lane, and I don't think the DOT would have an issue with it. Remains to be seen, but I think that's, I think they're aware of the situation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm supportive of this as well. The only, I think this goes back to my, I feel like I'm talking to my, too heavy. I think this goes back to my original question around cost, because this is an additional $79,000, and so that wouldn't come out of the traffic calming. That would be a separate, you know, CIP budget item for buffered bike lanes, of course.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a line in the budget in the CIP again for complete streets. So when we put together the budget last year, we didn't know exactly where the Bike Master Plan was going, so we put a placeholder in there, $150,000 each year for the implementation. That's how we paid for the Sycamore Street and First Avenue restripings that we recently did. And we would use the 2018 allocation, or at least the 79,000, estimated 79,000 of the 2018 complete streets money for this project.
Yeah, and then as we were talking about, sort of in the last segment too, the Jefferson-Market buffered bike lanes are planned, well, planned, I guess is the right word, not programmed, but planned in the Bike Master Plan in the timeframe of 2019 to 2022. So hopefully, if we can stick on target and there's money available, we'll accomplish those two in the next few years, which I think will be a major improvement. Those showed up time and time again in the planning efforts for the Bike Master Plan as really important things to get done, and that's why they showed up in the plan in the years they do. The Bike Master Plan also recommends implementing bike boulevards on portions of Gilbert Church and Davenport up on the north side neighborhood. A bike boulevard primarily is a signed route, so it has wayfinding signage almost on every bike boulevard. That's kind of one of the key elements of those. And you can do things on the pavement as well. Another thing about a bike boulevard, which we've not studied on the north side, but we will, is looking into other ways to make bicycling easier on those corridors, whether it's flipping stop signs, whether it's, you know, other forms of traffic calming and other things we can do to basically make it more comfortable for bikes, but still convenient for motorists as well. And then, and then in addition, I think depending on what you do with a bike boulevard, they can also calm vehicle speeds when bicycles are present, assuming that you're going to track more bicycles to those boulevards and sort of calm everything down a little bit. This, these are just three random images of buffered bike lanes from other communities. There's a lot of different ways you can stripe them, and that, how you stripe them really isn't the important part. But the important part is how you see those buffers. And again, the idea is sort of twofold. It's to make it more safe and convenient and comfortable for the bike, but also allow a natural calming effect of the vehicles in the, in the travel lanes. Because again, those are going to be squeezed down just a little bit.
Kent, what about those white vertical markers? Do those add a lot of expense? And do they actually add a safety component to it, if you know what I'm talking about?
Right, I do. So I think you're talking about like a, what I would call like a pylon.
Pylon, sure.
They're sort of the, sort of the nylon pylons that kind of pop back up and that sort of thing. You know, I think they would be more expensive. I don't know, Rodney, what that would add to a project. The bigger issue, at least on Dodge, yes, on Dodge and Market, Dodge and Governor, excuse me, on Dodge and Governor, is the number of driveways we have. So it'd be very difficult, if not impossible, to use those, just because the amount of the turning movements you've got to make. Any other questions on bike boulevards or the Bike Master Plan? I guess the last thing I'd say about the Bike Master Plan is, other than the convenience and the connectivity with the one-way pairs that are planned that we've already talked about for bike, buffered bike lanes, is that it really doesn't have an effect on the transportation system otherwise. You know, nothing else changes the north side. I think it just adds that obvious level of connectivity.
Yeah, I just would comment that I did sort of post this on Facebook, on our north side Facebook page, and this one generated definitely a very positive response. Everyone's looking forward to that.
Yeah, I think it'll be a good amenity. If no other questions, moving on to the third topic. It was concerns with sightlines at intersections due to on-street parking. Issues with sightlines are, what we would call a sightline is not uncommon in areas like the north side that have heavy on-street parking. I think, as you can all imagine, when you're traveling through the north side, you get to an intersection, and whether vehicles are parked legally or illegally, you know, too close to a stop sign and things like that, it does become problematic to see conflicting traffic or crossing traffic at times. Visibility at many of the intersections in the north side neighborhood and College Green neighborhood have already been corrected, using no parking corner to here or no parking here to corner signage. But we've kind of taken a shotgun approach to it where we've been really addressing them as complaints come up. You know, not all intersections are created equal and have the same visibility issues. That said, I think it is important, I think staff intends to take a proactive approach and really just take a look at all intersections on the north side and College Green neighborhood and just kind of get that out of the way. I think there's two different ways we can do that. One is actually go and look at each individual intersection on its own merits and then correct them as we can. Or we can really just take an approach where we say, you know, every intersection parking should be pulled back 30 feet, you know, from each intersection and go from there. So that, I think the right approach remains to be seen, but we're hoping to complete that review in spring of 2018. And arguably, I would say that this is probably one of the more important things and probably would have the largest effect on decreasing collisions at intersections on the north side. Aside from some of the bigger issues we have, maybe on arterial street, on the non-arterial streets, I think this might arguably make the biggest difference, is just cleaning up some of the visibility issues where you can see conflicting traffic that's going to cause an issue.
Well, especially when a car is coming down the hill at, I don't know, 32 or 35 miles an hour, and if you're turning onto the street that that car's coming down, you know, it's, the opportunity for an accident is pretty strong, pretty clear.
Right. Now with that, with that correction, we're also going to need more enforcement, and we get into some enforcement effort conversation here in a few topics, but, you know, whether they're, like I said, legal or illegal parking, if we pull that parking back from each intersection, we know how parking is on the north side. Folks are parking already too close to stop signs and things like that, but we have to, we have to increase our enforcement efforts or it'll be for naught. Any questions about, about that? We would have that hopefully again done by spring and bring back the results to you all, or just get the issue corrected and be done with it. Great, moving on. The fourth topic was the potential for construction of traffic circles at key intersections to improve safety. Working on the assumption that traffic circles won't be used on arterial streets, there's really no obvious locations in the north side neighborhood where I could, I could look at a map and say, these are the logical locations for a traffic circle. It just didn't happen. The reasons why we would not put a physical impediment such as a traffic circle on arterial street, some are obvious, some aren't. The obvious ones is that, of course, our major through affairs arterial streets are where we want traffic to be primarily. Reason being, if we try to get that traffic off their arterial streets, we end up getting a lot more cut-through traffic through neighborhoods that weren't intended to have that type or speed of traffic. So it's kind of this, you know, there's no perfect solution to it. But having said that, when looking at arterial streets, there are really, and I've got a map here, I'll show you in a second, there are really very few intersections that have two or more total reported collisions in a three-year period. Again, no collision's good, and we shouldn't be okay with it. But if you look at the city as a whole, it's almost every intersection in the city would have a collision in a three-year period. That's just sort of the reality of where we're at. Average vehicle speeds, and these were taken, well, they were reported in the 2013 north side traffic study. Average vehicle speeds recorded at or below 24 mile per hour at eight locations where data was available, so, and again, we're talking about non-arterial streets, but on the local streets, right now, we've got average speeds of about 24 or less at those eight locations where data was available. We've got one location where 85th percentile speeds exceeded 30 mile per hour, and that was on Lucas Street up around Fairchild, or up around Ronald's, excuse me. And that, and those are the type of speeds that we want to try and reduce. But again, that was just one location in the north side neighborhood. While no obvious locations for traffic circles were identified, as I mentioned, we do intend to review the Iowa Avenue corridor between Gilbert and Governor, and the Gilbert corridor between Iowa and Market for safety improvements. This map I'll show you in a minute, really, for some reason, there's a bulk of collisions in those two corridors, and it would make sense for us to look at those, I think, more closely and see if we can't find some solution to those. I think Iowa Avenue has more to do with the boulevard that goes through the middle, the median, and it's, it makes for very large sort of quirky intersections to cross, so I'm not sure what we can do there, but I think that would be our staff recommendation is to take a look at those two corridors and see what can be done. And here's that map. It's going to be a little bit difficult for folks to see, but what we did is looked at the entire north side neighborhood plus the College Green neighborhood and looked at the collisions at each location. So it's like 72, 73 square blocks, something to that effect. In the little yellow bubbles is the total number of reported collisions in a three-year period, and then where you see the brown, sort of the orange and the brown dots, those are where pedestrian or bicycle collisions occurred.
Does anybody want to ask questions about the fourth point?
I guess I was going to ask about Church Street. Is there any game plan to slow down the traffic for Church? Is that considered an arterial? Because to me, it seems like the traffic is way too fast through that area.
Right.
And I think to the extent that it does lead to some traffic on other areas, I think it will still be slower. Is there any game plan to slow down that traffic?
There's, there's a bike boulevard that is planned for part of Church, but as I There's a bike boulevard that is planned for part of Church, but as I mentioned earlier, a bike boulevard typically doesn't slow traffic down a lot. So other than taking a hard look at that corridor to see what we can do as well, I don't know that there's anything planned, per se. I know there's been discussions about adding parking to portions of Church Street over the years. I mean, that's something we could look at, of course, too, that would help slow traffic. But there are not bike lanes recommended at this point for Church Street because of the on-street parking that exists now. The width just isn't there, so.
The on-street is not allowed from 8 to 5, is that correct?
It's just not allowed at all, I believe, on the eastern half, and on the western half, you'll see some on the south side of Church towards Dubuque Street that is allowed. I think that's right. I think not during the day, so outside of 8 to 5 Monday through Saturday, I think.
Well, I would agree that, I mean, in terms of Church, Church, if we can get buffered bike lanes on the one-ways, then Church is the last street left in terms of arterial speed control. And so the bike, I mean, the parking along there seems to me to be a good remedy, and, you know, we have had discussions about, by allowing that, that that could be a place where Horace Mann's staff could park.
Right.
As well, so.
Right.
Or Prusell. You know, I mean, there are various ways in which opening up parking along that section of Church Street would be, I think, of a benefit to the, you know, the school and Prusell.
Sure, sure. And if we could do that, we'd have to look in the details, but if we could do that, it would certainly help slow traffic.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's been proven, so.
And then on the intersections, and I don't know, Kent, if you are still planning to have a neighborhood meeting, but I would encourage that we have a neighborhood meeting. The word I'm hearing, and in fact, it goes all the way back to the Ronald Street repaving project, is that the upper end of Gilbert, south of Brown, does have speeding issues, especially on the hill. But I've even noticed cars northbound on Gilbert, once they pass Market, they can be flying through there.
Sure.
So I would, I would say from Iowa to Brown would be how I would define the corridor. And then, you know, with the community meeting in the neighborhood, I would, there are, there's a finer grain, I think, to this question of cut-through traffic particularly. That's where we tend to see the higher speeds, and, you know, the fact is, is we already do get cut-through traffic, you know, even though we have five arterials plus Dubuque. In fact, that's part of the reason we have it, is people are getting from one of those to the other. We do have speeds throughout the neighborhood in various locations, and one of the things I've been discussing, I haven't heard anyone say they oppose it, in fact, I think many people support it, is the idea that, as is being done in other cities where traffic is a concern, setting the speed limit in neighborhoods that are well-defined, like the North Side, at 20 miles per hour, which, you know, as we've talked before, 20 is kind of the speed at which everything works, you know, in terms of traffic safety, people feeling comfortable. This is an issue of quality of life as well. You know, it's, you know, the collision rates, in my mind, are kind of the tip of the iceberg. And if we can slow the cars down, it may even help us in terms of, you know, that intersection sightline issue, because, you know, the reaction time when you're driving at a slower speed is, you know, isn't as long, so the chance of collision would be reduced. So that's my take, is that there may be another level. In terms of this traffic calming program, you know, how we implement it, I think, needs to be discussed in a kind of a neighborhood forum.
Yeah, and that's a good segue, and we're happy to stick on this one, obviously, but that's a good segue into the next segment, because one of the potential recommendations for the parking issue on the North Side, and whether or not to have a residential parking permit system or some other system, is to actually allow parking on both sides of all streets in the North Side, which I think would probably be the biggest aid in reducing speeds. So even if we did implement a 20 mile per hour without something to slow traffic.
Yeah.
We know it just won't work, and we've talked about this. But I think if we did lower it to 20 mile per hour, you certainly have to do something else to make sure people feel like they should be driving 20, and I think allowing parking on both sides would, may have other issues, unintended consequences, but one of the good things about doing that would be slowing traffic, definitely. And I think it would actually have a pretty dramatic effect on the North Side.
So why don't we move to that next topic?
Yes, thank you. So the next, the next topic is concerns with the availability of on-street parking and potential for residential parking permit system. As many of you know, on the North Side and then portions of the College Green neighborhood, the parking is currently limited to one side of the street from 8 to 5, Monday through Saturday, and then parking is permitted on both sides outside of those times. This is primarily intended to reduce commuter parking and limit storage of vehicles in the neighborhood. There's been a few different studies that have been completed in the recent past, one by staff, one by a consultant. Both show roughly the same thing, is that when you look at the neighborhood as a whole, it's about 70% full during the daytime hours. And then when you look towards the blocks nearer downtown, that rate really jumps up to about 85%, which is what we consider full or at capacity. The reason we say that's because after you, you sort of surpass 85%, really what happens is folks are just circling neighborhoods looking for parking, you know, and that, we see that a lot down around the College Green Park, and certainly downtown in the meters, is that people just start circling. So that's what happens once you sort of exceed that 85% threshold. And I've got a map here in a second that shows you approximately where that occurs on the North Side. You know, residential permit systems have been discussed in the past, but never really seriously considered by the neighborhood, I think, or by the council. The idea of a residential parking permit system came up in 2013 during the North Side neighborhood study, which we did have at least one public meeting, if not more, and that idea, of course, came up then, and we've all heard about it, I think, from time to time, but it's really never been seriously considered. And I think part of that is that staff has never historically received a lot of complaints about parking on the North Side. The complaints we do get are really more with illegal parking behavior, you know, where you're parked too close to a stop sign, or more frequently, where you're actually encroaching on someone's driveway apron, and they're finding it hard to actually back out of their driveway. Those are really the concerns we get. I can't tell you in the last few years how many I've actually gotten that was just said, I have no place to park. You know, it's just, I'm parking too far from my front door, or I'm having difficulty, you know, when I have my groceries getting home and that sort of thing. This is that map I just referenced, and this was the one that was completed by a consultant. This was put in the OPTICO study that I believe you all saw this last fall, and what you'll see is sort of these brownish-colored blobs represent 85% capacity. So when we looked at the daytime parking in these two neighborhoods, what you see is what we consider full during the daytime hours. Now, again, that's one-sided parking. That's parking on, it's calendar parking, so it flip-flops every day, but that's 85% full on one side. For reference, this is Mercy Hospital here. It's not very, the image isn't very clear, but this is Mercy, and this is College Green Park here. So clearly, you can almost draw a diagonal line from the northwest to southeast through the North Side neighborhood, where you've got higher density development in this area with multifamily housing, and then certainly you can tell that on the northeast of that is more single-family owner-occupied residence, and the parking isn't such a big deal. As most of you probably know, down around the park during the day, primarily this is sorority homes and multifamily housing and student housing, but not totally, by any stretch of the imagination. But that's, that's really what's occurring here as well, is you're seeing full parking during the day. Prior to implementing a residential parking permit system, if that's the route that council chooses to go, I think the following issues probably need to be considered pretty strongly. One is, of course, it's going to be important to gauge neighborhood support, especially since there'd likely be a fee associated with any permit. So if we go the route of permitting, whether it's $10 a permit, 20, 30, 50, 100, whatever we end up doing, certainly that that is going to want to be vetted with the neighborhood, because you may or may not like that. Also, there's going to be an obligation for folks to do a little bit of legwork on their end, because they have to actually acquire an annual permit, guest permits, and the like. Staff estimates, estimates that a simple permit system would cost upwards of $130,000 to implement, and then could be anywhere from, well, in the $60,000 range annually thereafter. We also estimate, and we feel pretty comfortable with those numbers, what's a little harder estimate is the actual revenues that we would generate from a permit system, again, because there's going to be a fee likely associated with getting a permit, but we estimate revenues could be in the $40,000 to $60,000 range. That's based off one and a half permits per dwelling unit in these neighborhoods, which is roughly 2,500 units, plus a little bit of extra for additional citations, guest permits, and the like. Needless to say, I don't think this is going to be a revenue generator unless we really sell a lot more permits than we would think we would, or unless, you know, that permit fee is $100 a permit or something.
Kent, are you able to anticipate the increased use of the parking ramps as a result of a permit system? Because presumably, there are some people that need to get to work that are using the free parking right now as a commuter. Has that been anticipated?
Yeah, I'd certainly anticipate it, but I think that's going to be tied to that permit fee, right? Because if it's a $10 permit fee, and potentially you're going to get a guest pass from a friend, or, you know, there's going to be ways to try and cheat the system a little bit, but I would think certainly, depending on how many permits we sell, you know, resident permits that are sold, guest permits that are sold, it's going to fill up some of that portion of the street parking, which is going to force folks to do something else, or if they can't get a permit at all, it's a good point that they're going to be certainly forced to find another place to park. How much commuter parking is really the bigger question that I can't answer, is how much commuter parking actually occurs on the North Side. I think there's a fair amount of commuter parking, but I really don't have any way to, really, aside from doing a survey or something, I really don't have any way to measure how much there is.
I would say with all of our decks except the new one that opened, we have a waiting list for permits. So if you're, if you're pushing people from neighborhoods into decks, which would, which would be a good thing, they're likely to be a daily payer as opposed to a permit holder. And as a daily payer, you're, you're more likely to deviate. So you might try to park in the deck one day, or find a neighborhood that doesn't have a permit system and go park there, too, so.
Right. And another, another portion of that, too, is, of course, how much we're charging for a permit. And this third bullet, too, is trying to anticipate additional public input and study that's necessary. The one thing that I also can't answer right now is that it's hard to know how many permits we would actually sell. You know, unless you actually get a permit system up and running, it's hard to know exactly how many you're going to sell. And what we also don't know, while we know the supply of parking, we don't know what that demand then is going to be. And the issue being that if you're paying $20 for a parking permit, the hope is that you're going to park closer to your front door than you are now, but if we're selling more permits than we have available parking, or there's more demand, I guess I should say, for permits than there is available parking, then those, that's not going to match up. And if you're parking as far or further away, but you're paying for a permit, that's not going to work well for folks. So that's something that we would also recommend, is we're really going to have to take a hard look at that and try and figure out how many permits would be sold versus how much supply there is, because if you're, like I say, parking further away than you were when it was free, that's, that's going to be a problem for residents. So these are some of the unknowns that, they're going to be tough to answer.
And I'd just add to that, while, while we don't really know what that revenue will look like, we're fairly certain on the cost side. What we do know is, in talking with some other college towns that have similar situations, is that they're not making money. In most cases, they're, they're lucky to break even. So I know the idea of a parking benefit district has come up, and I do know that those are implemented in other areas of the country, and some do generate dollars for the neighborhood. I personally, I don't think that's a realistic expectation for this type of setting, based on what we've seen in other college communities, and based on what we think the tolerance, if any, that the residents will have to actually pay for parking when they're not paying for that parking now.
Well, in my discussions on the North Side, in my own observations, and in fact, your comment, Kent, that you haven't received many complaints regarding access to parking on the part of residents, although Dave's here, and Dave, Dave is, and I've since also heard from another person on Church who also doesn't have access to off-street parking. There is some, there are some residents in the North Side. Nancy's here from, you know, Jefferson and Evans, who prefer parking, or, you know, they park on the street currently. And, but I would say in general, and my initial interest in the permit system for the North Side was that very few residents park on the street, so mostly we're talking about commuters. Commuters, in my view, they're, they're, allowing them to park would be priced by market demand, basically, as it pertains to where else they might choose to park, whether it's the ramps, or whatever, whatever the opportunities are for them to park, you know, to price it accordingly, but I think it would be considerably more than $10 a year.
Sure.
You know, it, I mean, even in San Francisco, I was looking, permit parking, which in San Francisco is for the residents only, is $128. So, you know, whatever, it's a market-driven decision, but it seems to me, I would not be surprised if it doesn't at least pay for itself. The College Green is a very different, you know, I've talked with Mark about this, as well as Jim, and that is a can, I'm beginning to feel, that's a real can of worms around College Green, because there is so much demand there, and we've accelerated that, or increased that demand with development east of Gilbert Street. So there, I think it's a very hyper-competitive situation in terms of commuters, possibly residents, shoppers, what have you, who all want to park in that area. That is so close to the downtown, and the downtown, in the sense of the downtown, not North Side marketplace, that I would, on the other hand, say, within not knowing what the residential demand is, that you could get a pretty, because of the demand, you could get a pretty good price for it.
Sure. Right, no, I agree. And then, I've got some information about that, too, in the, in our last topic, but I've had some discussions with a few folks that live around the College Green Park as well, and I don't think any of what we're saying tonight is kind of a one-size-fits-all approach, because I do think the North Side neighborhood's quite a bit different than the College Green neighborhood, and something that works around the park might be metering, you know, and something that probably won't work on the North Side, but we metered the 100 block of Washington right outside our door here, maybe a couple of years ago now, and what originally really wasn't full at all, now you'll see is almost full every day, and I think that's a symptom of office growth, especially with the Chauncey Building. Well, this building will be flanked by two new buildings here in the near future. Farmers market, I mean, there's a lot of reasons for it, but I think, you know, even metering up into that area might make more sense than a permit system.
So why don't we come back to this parking around College Green Park in a few minutes and try to clean up what you were already presenting us with?
Perfect, thank you. So with some of these uncertainties in this next slide, with some of the uncertainties about the parking permit system that we've already touched on, staff recommends taking an incremental approach, because again, when you get into a permit system, you really sort of have to jump all in. You know, you're going to need more staff, you're going to need another enforcement vehicle, and that's where that $130,000 figure comes from. What staff would recommend is taking a more incremental approach to this, and I've sort of laid out five of these steps. Not necessarily do you have to, not necessarily are they meant to be walked through, one through five, but there are options that we, I think, can, can look at incrementally, at least, before jumping into a full permit system. The first is simply increasing enforcement using existing staff and equipment to try and increase turnover, and also look at scofflaw tow lists and street storage issues and a lot of other issues that we, that we hear about. So that's literally taking the existing staff and enforcement vehicle we have now, reallocating those resources maybe from downtown to the North Side. Yeah, that's one, that's one option. The second option is to do that very same thing, but actually get that additional staff and equipment that might be needed. So we might need another vehicle with the license plate recognition, the software, and then staff to be able to accomplish that. The third is simply implementing a three- or four-hour limit for on-street parking, and this could be done as the North Side is today. You add a three-hour parking limitation to that, and right then and there, I think you get rid of the vast majority of your commuting population, because if you're commuting into the North Side parking, walking downtown to work an eight-hour day, the likelihood of you being able to go up there and move your car, you know, every three hours or every four hours is probably pretty slim. And I think that would help a lot to try and rid of commuting parking, if that's an issue. The only issue with that, too, I think, is that it might require waivers for folks that don't have off-street parking at all. So certainly, again, there's some sort of permitting or waiver portion to doing something like that, but that's pretty low-cost. The biggest issue is you probably still need that additional enforcement and staff. What I've been hearing from some of the meetings that I've sat on with the city managers, that our existing enforcement staff is already pretty well busy during the day and wouldn't be able to implement, you know, this additional permitting system in the, in the North Side. The fourth one is something that was recommended in the OPTICO study that you all reviewed here this last fall, is to simply remove parking restrictions and essentially double the supply of parking. So right now, you've got that calendar parking where every other day you're moving your car, and you could simply open that up, double the supply of parking, which I think could help. The unknown is, if all of that additional parking just fills up with commuters, then we're back to the same place we were. So, and again, it's really hard to know what that's going to look like without potentially implementing a pilot, so that's another way we could go, is, is open up both sides of parking for a year, see how it looks, do some additional study, figure out what the numbers look like. And then last is really implementing a full-blown residential parking permit system, and what the nuts and bolts of that system would look like, I think, remain to be seen, but that would be a full system where annually, at least, residents would have to prove residency in the North Side at their address, get a permit, pay their fee. There'd be issues with guest passes as well, you'd have to get some guest permits and so forth. And then, of course, you're going to need that additional parking enforcement that goes along with that. So that would be that $130,000, what Jeff was alluding to, the $130,000 at least as an upfront fee, and then potentially $60,000 or so annually after, for the additional equipment, software, and staff.
So as you get into the discussion here, I guess what I would really urge you to think about first, before you jump to what's the solution, try to articulate what the problem about first, before you jump to what's the solution, try to articulate what the problem is that you're hearing about. Because it's a different solution if you're trying to weed out commuter parking versus the storage of vehicles. It may be the same vehicle sits in front of my house all week and nothing's done about it, versus I can't find parking in front of, you know, on my block. So if you can kind of figure out exactly what problem is you're trying to address, I think the solutions will become much clearer.
Well, that's where I was going to start. I mean, John, you talked about neighborhood meeting. I guess I'm curious what the complexity would be of doing a more detailed survey of this neighborhood, even like a mailed survey to every residential address, just, you know, maybe a five-question, you know, a very easy, quick-to-complete survey, or even something they could go online and do instead, or something to get more detailed information from the people who actually live there. Because, as you say, Jeff, you know, when you say Kent, what you're hearing, I'm concerned that we may jump in and solve a problem that isn't necessarily what the residents in the area are seeing as the problem. And I think we need to really listen to what they have to say. And in saying that, I totally separate this from the College Green Park. But I think we really need to hear what they have to say, as what their issues are. Because I think that really impacts, if they're talking it's really the commuter issue, then to me, you know, implementing that three or four-hour limit may, you know, may be that solution, and maybe adding parking on both sides of the street at the same time, but still with that limit. I don't know. But I really feel like we need to hear more from the people who actually live there. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
We certainly do a lot of surveys. Kent's team does a lot of surveys, so that's...
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly do that. I mentioned earlier, somewhere in the presentation, there's about 2,500 residential units in the College Green north side neighborhood, if you combine those two. Certainly, like all surveys, you don't have to survey everybody. You know, you can whittle that down to maybe a tenth of that, or, you know, a random selection. And when I said, you know, I'm not hearing complaints, I didn't mean to say that to be combative, but I think what Jeff said articulated it better, is that we're just not hearing the complaints. So again, I'm not sure how to solve the problem, or what that exact problem is. I will say this, on a staff level, I would think that any permit system that we would employ at some point in time is going to generate more complaints for staff than we get now. And that's only saying that I may not be hearing what's going on the neighborhood, and it sounds like I'm not. But with a residential permit system like that, there's certainly, because the onus is on the neighborhood to get that annual permit, they've got to show that they're residents of the neighborhood and that sort of thing. The onus is on them, and certainly, that's going to create more complaints at a staff level than we get today. And that's just by sheer number of people that we're communicating with on a day-to-day basis.
So like Susan and Jeff, and I think Kingsley, I was asking myself the same question, what are our objectives, or what's the problem we're trying to solve? So when I ask myself that question, in part, I have to think about the form-based code that we've commissioned, and, you know, hopefully, or possibly will adopt. One thing we want to do, I believe, is avoid having to build more off-street parking, if there's an increase in housing or units in the north side because of the form-based code and the use of the missing middle. So we want to avoid more off-street parking. I think it's correct to say, we want to ensure that traffic speeds and the risk of accidents is reduced, even though you've described how it's really not severe. Also, I think, when I lived on North Lynn Street, I owned a duplex and had to flip back and forth on the street, because I did not have off-street parking at the duplex I owned. I don't know how many people there are like that in the north side, I have no idea. But for such people, it's important to be able to park their cars somewhere within a block at the most of where they live, you know. So that's another thing. And I think I had another... Find ways to encourage bicycling and walking, such that the whole neighborhood is a healthier place in that sense. So, yeah, so which of those are, you know, are most important, or are they all equally important? I'm not sure, but those are the ones that come to my mind?
Yeah, I agree that the better we understand the demand, the more likely we'll be successful in terms of implementing a permit system. Yeah, I'm just working off conversations and observations. But yeah, if we can, I'm short of a mailed survey of staff going and seeing what properties have access to off-street parking, things of that sort. But my goal has always been, first and foremost, in learning about residents that did not have access to off-street parking, that we need to provide some reasonable accommodation for them. That's part of what we're trying to promote, is a higher quality of life in the core neighborhoods. At the same time, it seems to me, the presence of automobiles, if they're driving at a slow speed, has some benefits, in terms of narrowing the traffic lanes, and depending on how we price the permit system. I've always believed that, it seemed to me, if I'm correct in my hypothesis that it's primarily commuters, that there could be some revenue generated with that. And the key issue with that is that the revenue would stay in the neighborhood. That makes the selling of that idea much more appealing, because if we can say, look, we'll get however we want to spend the money, snow removal on the sidewalks, whatever. That, in fact, I felt would be a way of promoting the idea of parking on both sides. I know people have expressed their concern about that. They may not be as concerned if they felt there would be a benefit to them with the revenue. But yeah, to have more data, I think, would be useful. But I'm not interested at all in reducing parking opportunities for those coming in from the outside. In fact, I think that's also, it is a benefit to the downtown. I mean, you know, we need as much parking as we can provide, in my view. We're already, it seems to me, it's overflowing into the neighborhoods. We don't want to cut off that supply. In my mind, we just want to price it. It's free. Currently, it shouldn't be free.
It might be helpful, Kent. I see your writing, and I just interrupted. It might be helpful if we could articulate this a little bit more, and you could try to convert what you hear into a goal statement.
Sure.
Or a problem definition.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
And then come back to us, and we could try to figure out how we want to respond to that problem as defined, or that goal as defined.
No, I think that'd be very helpful. And like I stated, these five, you know, there's any number of different ways you can spin all five of these, you know, these solutions. These are just five, I mean, you could bend these in any possible way you wanted to get at the problem. And again, maybe if we can try and articulate and sort of gather what that problem really is, then maybe we'll be able to do a better job of finding a solution.
I guess I have two, I think, what I think would be simple goals. One, to get the design speeds to 20 miles an hour in the neighborhood. And two, to increase access for parking for the homeowners and renters that live in the neighborhood. And then maybe if staff could sort of come back with a recommendation, and give them the flexibility to come back to us, those seem to me to be two pretty simple goals, that would give them the flexibility to come back and come up with a solution for us, while reaching out to the neighborhood.
If you were, a couple of ideas. I think if you were to survey the neighborhood, as was suggested before, the goals might become more apparent. You know, you'll understand the issues that they're expressing better, and you might be able to develop some goal statements from that. The other thing we could do, while in the process of surveying, is a little bit of number one up there, which is just periodically send our enforcement staff through the neighborhoods and see what types of hits they're getting. You know, how much of it are they just noticing illegal parking too close to corners? Are they seeing a lot of street storage issues? But if we spent, you know, even a month or two, just taking a pass-through once or twice a week, and not pulling out of the downtown a whole lot, but just, again, once or twice a week, we could probably get a better sense of what some of the issues are, and maybe where those issues are.
I like the kind of two-component approach to this, that I think is being articulated. One is to try to get a clear goal definition for us, that might lead to something in the longer term. And the other, Jeff, is just what you articulated, take the first incremental step. Step up the enforcement in the area, see what turns up, see what we learn from that, and then decide whether we want to take another step.
Yeah, I talked to Mark Remmel, too, interim director of transportation services, and he indicated too, that it wouldn't be what we're going to see with some increased efforts, but what we've already got in that neighborhood, he can actually tease some of that out of our data to show, you know, what illegal parking has occurred, what street storage looks like, tow lists, and that sort of thing. So I think we can also get some data from the past that might help augment the conversation.
Yeah, let's go to College Green Park.
Yep. Last topic is concerns with the availability of on-street parking near College Green Park, which we've sort of alluded to a little bit already in our conversation. Both staff and council have received concerns about the lack of available short-term parking around the park. Primary concerns are that the on-street parking is primarily used by commuters, again, which creates a lack of short-term parking for park users and then adjacent residents, because there are quite a few single-family owner-occupied houses in that neighborhood. Concerns are also that vehicles are routinely stored on-street for long periods of time, which I think I've witnessed. And to combat those issues, staff intends to review the usage of the area. And again, sort of like in that last slide, there's a bunch of different options we can take. But I think the ones that probably make the most sense in this neighborhood would be to either add meters to all or a portion of the streets around the park, or possibly, again, implement like a three- or four-hour parking limit to try and limit the amount of commuters that are parking in that neighborhood and then walking downtown for an eight-hour day. Also, to further that, if there are other similar concerns around other parks, certainly, we've got other issues like this at other parks that I'm not aware of, but we could broaden that review to those parks as well, and try and apply a similar approach to correct some of that, and free up some available parking, short-term parking for park users.
Thoughts, folks?
I'm not sure what the hour limit should be, if you were to do that. What I typically see is two hours.
Sure. Yeah, and again, that's where we can kind of spin that, and we could make it one hour, two hours, three hours. It's just then we have to be able to match the enforcement with that, right? Because implementing it but not enforcing it does us no good. So we've got to step up our enforcement a little bit. And I think whether we just apply this, whether it's meters or hour limit to College Green Park, or five different parks in the community, we just need to then be able to sit down and prioritize that enforcement effort between those different parks, and between the different neighborhoods, frankly.
I know there's some interest in having metered parking on perhaps one block, especially Johnson Street. So your memo suggests studying that?
Yeah, I think, and again, that part of that was, if we're going to go the route of a limit, is sort of seeing, you know, potentially talking to some of the neighbors. There's not that many owner-occupied houses that are immediately adjacent to the park, but reaching out to some of the neighbors. I've already talked to Mark McCollum, that owns a property in the Johnson, in the block of Johnson, adjacent to the park. So I'm already starting to get some of that feedback, but certainly looking at that, looking at actual usage in the area, because we don't have, outside of the OPTICO study, we don't have a lot of good data around that park. The north side neighborhood study that staff did in 2013 didn't include the area around the park. So just taking a look at it, and really trying to grasp what's there, is what I meant in the memo, just taking a look at it. And really, I think, the simplest approach is probably metering either portions of College Washington and Johnson, or one or two or three of those, whatever it might be. And again, I think really what we're seeing is, even on that 100 block of Washington, like we talked about earlier, for the first month or two or three, it was pretty empty. But then all of a sudden, people start figuring out that it's there, they know what the limits are, the meter terms and so forth, and they start to fill it up. And I think, again, with Mr. Allen's project and the Chauncey project, both, there's going to be, there won't be any less demand around the park, that's for certain.
I'm wondering, Kent, if that one-block segment there between Washington and College on Johnson, we might consider testing the idea of parking meters on both sides? I mean, most of the other streets in that area already have parking on both sides. We know that parking on both sides will calm traffic, and it's only one block, and it's in a good location. We know the demand's there, so.
Right. Yeah, and in some of the conversations I've had, I mean, we could certainly do that. In some of the conversations I've had, like any change, there was some concern that if you, instead of having the calendar parking on Johnson, where you're, every other day, you're swapping, if you fill both sides, backing out of some of those narrow, single-loaded driveways is going to be difficult. So I've already heard a little bit of feedback about that. But aside from some of those issues, I mean, certainly, you're adding more parking, calming traffic, and potentially making more revenue if it's metered.
Well, the thing is, if you meter it, hopefully, we could design the spots so that they're not too close to those driveways also.
Right. Yeah, so we typically, yeah, right. So we could certainly mark them and pull them back.
Yeah, I mean, you could mark them and pull them back from those driveways, to me. I mean, I would be interested, I think, as I've watched the demand around that park over the last number of years, it's just, you know, gotten busier and busier. And very seldom that I will come down and say, drive down College, and see an empty spot, you know, anywhere on either side of College Street. So I would strongly encourage that we start looking at metering. And with the meters that we have today, we can always adjust the time limitations over time, correct?
Correct.
So we could put them in with a four-hour time limit, change them to three, change them to two, whatever, increase the price. I mean, I think that is what makes sense. And I think we've gotten some, I think we've gotten some interesting information that Mark has, I know he sent to me and probably sent to other councilors, on what some other cities are doing on just demand-based pricing. And it would seem like with these smart meters, there's probably more of an opportunity to look at doing some of those things as we move forward. So I'm certainly supportive of starting to look very strongly at metering on those three sides of the park. If there's space, you know, to do the two-side parking on Johnson, I'm certainly not adverse to looking at that. And again, I think with meters versus, I mean, you block two blocks away, or one block away, and you've got to pay in the Chauncey or anywhere else, so why shouldn't people have to pay there? And plus, putting the meters in, I think, gives us that opportunity to actually control where people are parking a little bit better, because they're going to be parked, hopefully, in that spot that's designated for that meter. So would help with not being too close to the corners, not blocking driveways, and starts with some revenue.
Yeah, no, I agree 100%. And to your point, there's probably not very many council meetings that go by where we're not changing meter terms somewhere, for various reasons, for businesses or for other reasons. But it seems like every third council meeting, we're changing a meter term somewhere. So you're right, that's not a horribly hard thing to do.
And I guess I would like to proceed expeditiously on the meters as well, because it's not only the adjacent homeowners, I'm also concerned about access to the park. And any given day, it is very difficult to find parking even in close proximity. And while I absolutely love studies, and I think those are absolutely important part of traffic planning, I think sometimes we can rely on the observation. And I think just in terms of the overwhelming amount of anecdotal information, I would really like to proceed forward on that as quickly as we can, consistent with, you know, making sure that we're not missing anything, or, you know, any other concerns from other adjacent landowners.
I would agree with that, Rocknease, around that park especially.
Yeah, it's so close to the ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. I mean, I guess the process that I'm thinking through is something that was already kind of articulated in our packet around kind of that toolkit, and kind of thinking about costs. And it just seems a little weird for me. And again, we're becoming into a bigger city, in a burgeoning metropolitan area, about metering parks. And so I was really thinking of that last comment here. So I'm generally supportive of the College Green Park area because of its proximity. But looking at expanding it to other city parks, I think I get it, but it just kind of made me feel a certain type of way. I was kind of walking through the process of what that would look like, and, you know, as somebody who kind of frequencing, goes to a park now, then I have to think about, you know, paying for it. And I think the app works, but it's just something that I think we need to think about or put in the back of our minds, as far as what that looks like, as far as accessing parks in generally, general.
I wouldn't think we'd see any other parks.
No, I think we actually have the opposite program at several, the problem, sorry, at several of our parks. So for instance, if you wanted to go out and see the new Frank Holtz Miller Park, there's no parking signed, excuse me, all around that park. Same with Tower Court. So you can't technically drive and park around the park on either side of the street, in some of our parks. So I think the comment is more to look holistically at our parks, and not necessarily suggesting that meters need to go around various parks, but looking at some of the parking regulations that we have. Because I know we've had complaints from certain neighborhoods, or from people who want to access neighborhood parks by vehicle that have trouble doing so.
Yeah, more opening availability than anything else. The issue we have here is it's probably our most urban park, and, you know, signing it for park use only or something like that, it just won't work. I mean, the enforcement would be very difficult, to say the least.
So I think you're hearing strong support for metering, and then, you know, the details matter. So presumably, you look into the details and decide where specifically. matter. So presumably, you look into the details and decide where specifically to install metering and what the time period would be, what the rate would be.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't think, it sounds like, it sounds like council's wishes to move forward with that rather quickly. So I don't think that'll be a, a super time-consuming thing. We just need to go out and, I know I tell you guys this a lot, but what, what happens is there's always, there's always a ripple effect with, with any parking change we make. So we just need to kind of grasp that. But I think certainly we can move forward pretty quickly.
Well, and before that, I mean, talking to the neighbor, you already mentioned that a little bit, you know, there's only a couple owner-occupied, you know, places. And so having that conversation first, I think, could be important as well.
Sure, sure. That's all six topics. I'm happy to answer any other questions that we missed along the way or go back to a topic if we need to.
The cost of evaluating a permit system, if we were to do, let's say, an evaluation stage, how much would it cost? And also in terms of staff time, in terms of your own wattage that it would take?
Yeah, you know, I think we would do it in-house. I don't see that as something we'd have to hire a consultant for, certainly. To be debated, once we start looking at it, if it gets too complicated. But I, I think certainly it's something we could do in-house. It's hard to say, you know, how long that would take, but I think if we do it in-house, obviously we keep our costs down.
We have, we have the software that we need in other parts of our parking operation. Mark Rummelstaff uses the technology that we would use. There's some add-ons that, that would need to be brought in for the, the permit system. But I, I think the evaluation is really the neighborhood outreach and trying to understand.
Will that be a lot of staff time to do? Because I guess, Rob's sort of coming, you two think it would, okay?
Yeah, I think, you know, when you're looking at 72, what was it?
Block square, almost 72 blocks, yeah.
72 square blocks. You know, if you're doing surveys, if you're doing neighborhood meetings, that's a lot of data to collect and sift through. Usually what you end up doing is going back and presenting the data, the survey data to the neighborhood, and they'll wrestle with that a little bit. You know, it's, it is a time-intensive process, but I really wouldn't suggest you get into a permit system without that type of engagement.
I mean, that's really what I was wondering, is if it is a super-high wattage, I guess I don't feel great urgency on the permit, is what I'm saying. But if it's a reasonable amount of time for staff to allot over the next six to nine months, I guess I'd like to take a look at it. I don't know what people feel about that.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think it needs to be done deliberately. But I, I would, you know, I would like to see it move forward. The other issue that we haven't talked about is, and this has come up, you know, since this work session was announced, backyard parking, you know, that's the other, this is all kind of, all these interrelated parts. And, you know, you affect one, you may affect the other. I think some, some property owners already rent some of their.
They do.
Parking for commuters or whoever wants their, to park their car on their property. So I think that may, that's part of the, the dynamic that we're dealing with as well.
Yeah, I agree. And, and something I would suggest, I think, to Rockne's question about the time it would take and, and staff time, you know, I, from the earlier conversation, it would make sense to me to sort of work on that goal definition and try and really tighten up what we're after before we start with the public.
Higher wattage.
Yeah, before we start with the public comment periods and the, the public meetings and surveys and that sort of thing. It seems to make sense to me to try and really define what that problem is. It may be parking on both sides of the street, you know, as a pilot project. It may be something else. But I think if we can try and define that a little better, then we can certainly move on to a permit system if we need to. But I'd hate to start that process before we, you know, forgot exactly what we're trying to get our arms around.
Councilman Thomas, just to respond to your, your comment about the backyard paving, that's really coming as part of Phase Two of the neighborhood stabilization effort that we're in. So tonight, you're going to be considering the housing code changes. That will come when we present the zoning code changes, which is probably shortly after the, the first of the year.
Right. Yeah, so the people building an extra room on their house is also coming into this.
Okay, I think we can probably move to our next topic. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your input.
All right, so the next topic is clarification of agenda items. I want to refer to Item Eight, revisions to our TIF policy, which we will be discussing tonight. Given communications we have received, and to ensure that interested people have an opportunity to comment and for us to consider what we learn, I plan to ask for a motion to defer tonight. But we will have the equivalent of a public hearing. And so I need to know, Eleanor, the technical way to do this, you know, so there's a motion on the floor, a motion to adopt the resolution, then what? Or how do you want us to do that?
Well, the public comment is just, it's not a public hearing, it's just a public, public comment. So, you know, you don't really need any, I mean, you could, you can put, if you want to put the item on the, on the floor and defer the item, you can do that.
That's, that's what I recommend.
Yeah, that's really all you need to do.
Yeah. All right, so after we hear people speak, can I have a motion to defer? I'd say that, right?
And you can put public comment again on the next time, if you want to.
Yeah, okay, that's what we'll do.
And it's probably your intention, but I would suggest that you allow staff to, to give an overview of it so those that are watching or, or watch this later on can understand what's being considered and then perhaps come at the next meeting.
I think Wendy's ready to do that. Anybody else wanted to speak about that?
Great job. It's a good idea.
Okay. Item nine, about resident rental permit requirements. We can discuss that tonight, right? Because, yeah, okay, I mean, in a work session. So I guess I want to ask a few questions. And I don't know who would be the right person to answer, so I'll just ask the questions. Am I correct in understanding that with the exception of the rental cap, the provisions of this ordinance will apply to rental units in single-family and duplex structures throughout the city?
Let me look through those quick a second. Yes, you are correct.
Okay, thanks. And do I understand correctly that new rental permits could not be issued in neighborhoods that exceed 40% rental of those types of units? At least that's what you, is being recommended.
Permanent rental permits, yes. There's a provision for temporary rental permits in certain situations.
Yeah, okay. So one of the things we'll have to talk about during the formal meeting is what percent we really prefer? Because staff is recommending 40, maybe we want to do 35, maybe we want to do 45, I don't know, we'll find out. All right. And then a question has arisen mainly from Goose Town neighbors having to do with boundaries and about whether we should alter at least one boundary pertaining to the, to the districts. And I guess we could talk about during the formal meeting as well. But I know my general feeling is there's always going to be an edge problem with regard to any district boundaries we set up. So I'm just alerting you all, I think that'll be a topic we're going to have to focus on.
I mean, I think with some of, with this boundary issue, I think you just need to hear what people have to say. And then I think we'll, staff will need to go back and take a look at it and see how it shakes out. I mean, the bottom line is there needs to be, if we move a boundary, there has to be a rational basis for doing that. And it has to be consistent with the rest of the analysis. But I'm not sure you have to make those decisions tonight. Now, it may be that you want to go ahead and get first reading under your belt to show support. And we may have to back up if we change something to first reading. But I don't think you have to decide all that tonight.
Okay. Yeah, okay. And a related point has to do with claims about effects on affordable housing. So we'll have to talk about that again. I mean, also, is there anything, anybody? I guess that's the end of the questions, just the one, really, I guess. So anybody else want to raise any points with regard to this or questions that really can help us understand what we're going to be doing?
Yeah, I mean, in, in advance, the, another, another aspect of this had to do with, you know, situations where it seems to me it may be, it's conceivable that we may find occupants of the given property to be listed on the deed at a very low percentage of ownership. And based on the language that we were seeing in the memo, staff's memo, it, it wasn't clear to me, you know, how, how that would work. Because if we do, you know, and I, we've already seen this, where you have two 1% deed holders, if we allow then one more renter in that, that residence, we're in a sense back to three, the three unrelateds, basically. Where it's a way in which unrelated, you know, the, the ownership notion is being utilized to claim that the residence is owner-occupied, when in fact, it's the, the actual occupants are 1% holders who are then claiming, you know, occupying the building. And, you know, then you, depending on how many we add as allowed in addition to those on the deed, raises a question, is how that, it seems to me it may be a loophole in terms of the.
So right now, if, if you have any owner, even a 1% owner living in the house, there's no rental permit required. So under the proposed change, an owner occupant, so even a 1% owner can have one tenant without needing a rental permit. When you raised your question, John, and, and, you know, okay, if we have three siblings who each own 1%, I mean, I think the intent is that they'd still be limited to one, and I think we can tighten up that language.
The other thing I would, I would point out, there's going to be loopholes, and, people will find loopholes. And, and we should try to anticipate those and, and close them certainly. But one thing with this 1% owner loophole is that it's a much riskier investment for somebody. So if, if you're buying into a neighborhood that has a, that's already over the cap, and say you're a parent and you're buying a, a home to, to house your student for four years, your intention more often times than not is to sell that property again. You won't be able to sell that to someone who traditionally wants to rent it, right? Because we can't take in more rental permits in that district. So not to say it will stop that from happening. I think we're, we're always going to get, again, those creative ownership structures. But it becomes much riskier because you don't have that fallback option of just leasing it to somebody who will be able to obtain a rental permit.
Selling it, did you mean, Jeff?
Correct. So after, after my son or daughter graduates, I have to go sell that. And unless I can find another parent to buy that and, and who wants to take on that same ownership structure, you're going to have to find an owner occupant to sell to.
Well, and I think, while we may not have solved all the problems, I think this is a really good start. And I think we'll just have to keep looking at the necessary tweaks as we go forward.
And Jim, did you just want to save the Goose Town thing for the actual hearing itself? In terms of further discussion on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you want to hear what people have to tell you before you talk about that.
Okay, so any other questions about agenda items?
I would just say, as we're going through this, you're going to just highlight, so there's, it's not necessarily in the memo, or maybe I'm missing it, but discussing kind of the caps and how that pertains to neighborhoods that are over the cap and what that process may look like as an individual, you know, loses a rental permit and then comes back in. Okay. Just because that just seemed unclear. Thanks.
There's just a couple of items in the consent calendar that don't need to be pulled out, per se. But I, I would like to make a couple of comments on them. I think they're really important. One is the TIF documents. I think there's some really important information in there that needs to be highlighted. And that's 4D1, and then 4D3, the Fresh Starts Janitorial Service with Shelter House. I think, again, that's a, a very important program that is good to highlight for, remind people in the program, in the community that we're doing that, so.
Susan, do you want to bring up those points during the formal meeting, during our discussion period?
Yeah, that's what I would like to do, after we've made the motion to approve the consent. I know we don't normally talk a lot about the consent calendar, but I would just like to make a couple of comments on those items.
Sure, okay.
Not really any question, but just pointing out in the correspondence, the 4F3 from the, the joint resolution from the student government folks, I found that very interesting, especially since Jeff and I had just attended a politics and government class on the university. And it was, it was very interesting, and the students were very engaged and asked really excellent questions. And it's, it's great to see that there's encouragement out there for the students to become active and register to vote and, and engage in their civic responsibilities. So I, I was pleased to see that.
Any other agenda items?
It's related to the, to the, the housing, the rental cap. And it was just a question about the housing, student housing study. What, what is the status on that?
Well, we have a draft report. And I actually, earlier today, submitted comments back to the university on those. University's taken final comments from the stakeholders. And I don't know what the turnaround will be, but we're getting close. It's taken a lot longer than anybody anticipated.
Because it, it seems to me to be kind of a, a critical piece, you know, this data-driven decision-making. If, you know, it'd be very helpful to have that in.
Yeah.
In our discussion.
We're getting close.
Okay, let's turn to our info packet discussion, October 19. Anything on it?
IP four, the info from Councilman Cole on the makerspace proposal. Reading through all of that information, one thing jumped out at me, Tech Shop talked about in Pittsburgh and Arlington, engaging the Veterans Agencies, Department of Veterans Affairs, and involving them, because I think that's oftentimes a, a forgotten group of folks that, that need to get out back into the market workforce. And, and it would be great to be able to include that in some of your discussions about a market, potential market space here and involve our VA system here.
Absolutely.
IP three is just from the CTC, the Community Transportation Committee. It's just looking at different percentages around passes and things along those lines, just to keep on our minds around transportation and that being a really important issue that's being discussed throughout the last couple of months, and some of the data behind it.
Anything else on October 19? All right, how about October 26?
Kind of related to IP two, I've been reading recently about these kind of transportation-like company systems related to restaurants, you know, where it's possible now to order out through the local one that formed, kind of in response to Grubhub, is called Chomp. So it's, it's a similar service to, you know, an Uber or Lyft, and that, you know, it's drivers will deliver your meal. And it's not the, under the automated vehicle category, but it's still another, another thing that's coming or that's already here that is affecting the use of our streets.
IP four and five, just more great information, continuing updates. I guess I don't necessarily talk about it every time, but, you know, they're important. Especially IP five, I mean, not to say IP four isn't just as important, but just seeing progress, especially that's been made with our police department as well, I think is, has been big. Sorry, I'm kind of crashing a little bit from the caffeine, feel a little.
Draw in?
I need another boost.
Well, with regard to IP four, I had a very good conversation with Ben and Gustav, our student liaisons, about affordable housing as seen from a student perspective. And I, I think we do need to pay closer attention to that and perhaps build it into our Affordable Housing Action Plan in some future amended version. But one of the things that Ben and Gustav and I talked about was the, the implications of increasing the supply of housing oriented towards students. And by supply, I mean, the kind of units are actually discussed in the housing market analysis that Jeff and I have both read a draft of. But, you know, and that basically involves higher-rise structures that are well-managed, well-designed, in appropriate locations. And it, there are several of these already in the works, but more could be built, perhaps by the university, perhaps through a public-private partnership, perhaps in other ways. But there are implications with regard to increasing this, implications for rents with regard to increasing the supply of that kind of housing. So I, I really think our Affordable Housing Action Plan needs to be looking more carefully at that. And in other words, about the relationship between increasing the supply of such housing and and rents.
Yeah, I think a good time to do that would be after you get the chance to consider the market analysis. As you alluded to, that is one of the, the key findings in the report, is compared to the peer communities and institutions that they chose to use, we have a much smaller percentage of student-oriented beds, is what they call them. And, you know, they really point to that factor as contributing to affordability problems, contributing to some of the neighborhood encroachment issues that, that we have. So it, it may be a strategy, a specific strategy that, that we do want to incorporate in, in some type of report that says, you know, these are, these are opportunities that, that we should be looking for. Of course, you have to be careful with those because you, you tend to get the interest where the land is either easiest to assemble or cheapest. And so you see a lot of these large student housing developer, developments in many communities taking place on the fringe of the communities, and we've seen it with the Quarters now. We've seen it a little bit with the, with the Lodge previously. You know, other than the rise, we, we haven't seen that occur in Riverfront Crossings or downtown, partly because it's just so darn expensive to assemble land for that type of development. But there are some communities, and, and the study's going to point to some, that have strategically taken steps to, to attract that type of housing.
With regard to IP number five, the Social Justice and Racial Equity Report, I agree with Kingsley, of course, and thank Stephanie for preparing it, but I'm, I think I did not, well, I don't recall seeing any reference to the LGBT amicus brief, which I know, Eleanor, you and I have communicated about, but I'm not sure other people on the council are aware of it. So could you briefly state what that's all about?
Sure. And I, we've got a couple amicus briefs going on here due to my conversations with Jim, and, and so I'm, I'm trying to, once they're at a point where it makes sense to give you an update on, on all of them, I was going to do that. But one of the amicus that, what was being prepared, amicus brief just means a friend of the court brief, is in the Colorado case of the cake, cake seller who wouldn't sell to a same-sex couple for their wedding. And the, I can't remember, that was, that was being done, put together by, I think, one of the attorneys in California, the LA attorney, attorney or another one. And we're kind of on this list now when they're reaching out to similar communities if, if we're interested in, in signing on, and we did. We signed on as the city, because I can do that under my signature, and, and the mayor also signed on to that individually, so. And I believe there's been oral argument in that case.
Yeah, thanks. I, I wanted to make sure people were aware of that, but also it wasn't in the Social Justice and Racial Equity Impact Statement or Report, and thought it should be.
I was actually going to put it in the next one because it actually just got filed, I believe, last week. So it wasn't that it wasn't on the radar, it was just going.
All right, you're on top of it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Stephanie. IP eight, that's proposed meeting schedule for January through March. I was just wondering about March 20th, because, just, you know, if it's spring break, it's problematic. So I don't know if that's spring break or not. Maybe you could check into that and see what that leads to.
Yeah. I'm hearing it's the week before from the audience.
Okay. All right, well, they would know. Never mind.
That would be problematic, though.
Can we turn to the November 2nd packet? And we have six minutes?
That's going to be tough. IP five. So I really appreciated, you know, Stephanie and the work that she's done, and obviously other city staff as well. I mean, I couldn't say, I, I can't say how much this is kind of exactly what I was talking about in regards to really looking at, especially the city departments that are listed here, and looking through and how we can, you know, really put policies together that I think affect some of our, not only underrepresented populations, but just generally, you know, good policy across the city. The only question I have is kind of the next steps, because it does talk about, kind of in conclusion, expanding to city departments. I mean, one of the questions I was actually going to ask Kent was even in the analysis that which we were going through, how that conversation could have, you know, kind of morphed into a toolkit kind of analysis from that perspective, but, so that's my first question, but, I mean, going back to my comment, it's just awesome stuff. I mean, especially in focusing at the end, discussing some of the comments around how we can include different vendors, include more minority-owned vendors, more women vendors. I just think that, you know, if, if we're able to do this from a city perspective, I think it's going to put us in a different place.
So your question is what are the next steps?
Yeah, I suppose, expanding for city departments.
Well.
And continuing.
First, I mean, some of these items that we described in there have next steps associated with them, and so absent any direction from council, to the contrary, we'll, we'll proceed as, as the memo indicates. You know, the next step for us is to identify new departments to go through this exercise. It is a very time-consuming process, so we'd probably still do it on a targeted basis. But I can tell you, in just having daily interaction with, with department heads, this type of mentality is, is on everybody's mind. It's still healthy to actually go through the documentation phase, but, you know, the, the hope is that you continue to closely evaluate these policies, but even the day-to-day decisions that departments are making, they're starting to, starting to think about this. We're all starting to think about these types of implications. So I think it's, I think it's moving along well. We'll, we'll continue to, to march forward, and we learned a lot through this process, and as we bring in new departments, we might tweak things a little bit, but I think you'll see more of the same.
What I found interesting in looking at it was that, at least in this report, it didn't seem like there was any incredibly glaring issues that you came across. I mean, there were things to tweak, you know, things we could do a little better. You know, you're looking at it from a perspective that probably a lot of people already have, but maybe not with quite the same attention as when you're specifically doing it for this toolkit. So I think what it says is while we always have room to improve, I think we're already doing a pretty good job, but it's always good to step up and improve.
Anybody else on this information packet? All right. Well, you know, it's 22 till, and we have one last item, but I don't think we have enough time really to fire through it. It's council updates on boards, et cetera. So let's, what's the right verb here? Let's adjourn this meeting till after, right after the formal meeting. So with regard to it, we really had stopped at something that's going to take us five minutes probably, but.
Just an update on the assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
Yes, yes. I'm trying to find it on my notes anyhow. So where is that?
I'll start while you're looking.
Yeah, please.
Steering Committee for the Access Center has had a meeting since our last one. Nothing specific to update, we just keep working forward. I think we're getting closer and closer, but I think I might have said that last time, so we're, we're getting close.
Is this an exam, an instance of getting half as, making, getting half as close as you were before?
Halfway.
And half as close, then half as close, then half as close. You can never get there, it's all about calculus, actually.
We're going to get there. I am convinced we are going to get there, and soon.
Good, thanks. Casey, why don't you go next?
Nothing. Rules Committee just thought about meeting, but we didn't, so.
Nothing on the City of Literature.
But, you know, we're wondering what the other cities of literature are doing, what the creative cities network is doing, you know?
Well, I mean, basically, he said that it's not going to affect our status, I think was what he had indicated, so we're continuing to get updates from him on that, but supposedly it's not going to impair our status.
Okay. Boeing?
Well, last month, Tracy Heichu and I attended the Invest Health Pod convening in Henderson, Nevada. It was a really good experience, and yes, we did go up to Las Vegas briefly one evening and had fun. Won 15 cents. 15 cents! But we were, in the group, we were able to share our, our ideas and plans with representatives from some of the other Invest Health cities and received a lot of constructive feedback on some of our ideas and plans. And the Invest Health grant itself actually is only two years from the Robert Woods Johnson Foundation and the Reinvestment Fund, and that ends this December. I can't believe it's been two years already, it's gone really fast. But our, our group is, plans to continue to get together, the five of us, as well as work closely with the stakeholder group that, that has evolved from our group, and we'll keep you posted on the great ideas we have planned for the coming year for our community.
Excellent. It's good news.
It's fun.
John?
Normally, I would not report from the Johnson County Emergency Management, but there was something that came up that I, I thought you all and, and staff might be interested in, and that is whether that emergency management should purchase drones. And I thought I would throw that out there. I don't know if staff or council has any opinion regarding them doing that.
I don't know for what purpose.
What is our policy on drones currently?
Not for law enforcement purposes, I think.
Right. The city can't use drones for traffic enforcement purposes. I always have to look back at that. It was a compromise thing that came out of an initiative, so.
But just for that particular.
But I don't think it would affect JEC because they're a separate entity.
No, and I, and I think we could use them for public safety purposes, too.
Yeah.
With just not issuing citations and things of that nature, and certainly in the emergency management field, they're becoming increasingly commonly used, and I, I would see no reason not to use them for that purpose, whether you're looking at tornado damage, flood damage, trying to get into a confined space that you otherwise wouldn't be able to see. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Yeah, I'd say as long as there's not a mission creep. Right. That's it, John?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll mention two things. On the 19th, I participated in a meeting of the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, and we touched on, you know, each of the topics that I mentioned in our last meeting about forthcoming events, but I think the main interest had to do with RagBri and the possibility that we would be a stopping point in next year's RagBri. If we are, I'm sure you're going to race in it, aren't you?
Ride, not race. Ride anyways.
Right. Yeah, so there's a meeting in January in Des Moines, right? I can't remember the exact date, so we'll know better, yeah. Also, on the 24th, I participated in a meeting of the Partnership for Alcohol Safety, and much of the discussion focused on alcohol and beverage control, you know, and, and the meeting they were going to have in Davenport, and about whether they might be proposing some changes that would be of benefit to us. Yeah, and I don't know how that meeting went. Has it been held yet? I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I don't know how it went, but.
Yeah, so Jody.
I think it went fine. Eric was there with chief.
With chief, yeah.
Basically, they're just in the process of gathering input at this point.
Yeah. Okay. So that's all I would like to tell you about high committees and all that. So I think we could consider our work session adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for your patience, it's been a long.